Test one, two. We have sound now. Any sound? We're working now. Go ahead and call the Hillgrove City Commission meeting. Order to start with the flood relief.
Flood relief is through the flag of the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with the minutes from the last meeting. Everybody's had a chance to approve.
Make the motion to approve.
Nicole makes the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Go ahead.
Mike, go ahead, Mike.
Mike seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Presentation of the bills. Everybody had a chance to look at all the bills from on 12/19.
Make a motion.
The moves, is there a second?
I'll second.
Nicole, second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Next item of business is the disconnects for December 27th.
Move to approve.
Mike moves to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
Paul seconds. Ashley, just a question on it. So number six, is that a mistake or was there a check that came in?
No, to my knowledge, no check came in. Julie asked if she should keep it on there and I said probably until we get it to collections.
Correct. They don't just...
I can double...
Oh, never mind, sorry. I looked at the wrong line.
Oh, okay.
Never mind, it's four, not six. That's why. All right. All those in favor of the disconnects, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Nicole, we'll start with you tonight.
Okay. Ashley will talk about the true up in a meeting coming up for the water side of things. I do have one thing about the alleyway. I got a call about the alleyway behind the businesses along Main Street where the post office is. They're wondering if that is something that the city might be able to clean. Just because it is a high-traffic area, the post office, people go through there, drop their bills off in the box, but they either have to exit one way or the other or turn around, which can cause probably some issues with other people hitting each other. There's been people getting stuck back there and almost taking out the side of the buildings. And the other side of it too is if, if it doesn't get cleaned out, that when it does, it'll get pushed back onto the street when the street pass have already come by, so then they have to come by again to clean it. So I don't know if there's something that can be done with that alley.
Why don't you let me talk to Jim tomorrow about it?
Okay.
See what he has to say.
Yeah.
While they're handling other alleys, but...
Yeah.
And that must be one of the alleys that we do take care of because our construct does.
More than likely. But I will get a firm answer for all of you.
Thank you.
I'll send you out an email when I find out.
Perfect, thank you Dave.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Okay. I'll go next. Just wanted to let everybody know that I signed a letter of intent for the hospital grant out there. It doesn't mean that we are applying for the grant. It's for security, for the water treatment plant, our electrical systems, all of those things. To make sure if anything happened that we would have a way of doing that.
Is your microphone on?
Should be. Now I just need to be a little closer.
Levi, is that the I-I... I-I... It should be on. Is it the I-I-J-A one? Because, oh, this is the new... Joe also put in for us. Okay, there's just a new technology one, so I just want to make sure we weren't doubling up.
No, this is a... This will be for the Department of... Give me a sec. My mind's losing it.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't doubling up at all.
That's through emergency services and it is the local cybersecurity grant program. And it's just a letter of intent, it's not an actual grant. And I'll send out some more information for you guys on that, so that you can look at it. With the snow removal, I was asked by a couple of the employees to talk about that, which I'll send out a letter to the editor about that. Reminding residents that it's okay to pile snow on their... On the boulevard, they're trying to keep it on the boulevard, but with this amount of snow that we've had, it's hard to keep it all on the boulevard. But the only ones that we've ever... That are required to clean off the sidewalks are the... From the school down to go to Heritage Bank now and then on the main streets. Just the business thoroughfare, so. Because some had asked about that. Like I said, they're trying their best. And then just clear up the way that things are plowed that, you know, they, on a storm of this scale, they're going to plow the streets open first, then we'll go back, get the main part of the business district cleaned up and then start cleaning up the rest of town. And that's how we'll move forward. Evaluations are done. I'm just waiting for the signatures. I need to sit and talk down with Jim and we'll get those to you to review. Dave?
I guess I can commend Jim and his crew for, you know, the hang of storm and they, they still got a lot of cleaning up yet to do. And there's some few little issues that we've got to sit on, talk about as far as blocking intersections and things. Jim's out sick now and I wasn't able to talk to him today, but I'll, I'll get together with him. And the other thing, I sent an email out regarding the bridge going into the park, the Goose River Bridge. Did everyone get that email? All, you get?
How long ago was it before you left?
Probably a week and a half.
I remember getting run along too.
Two and a half, about. And just for the crowd, I was advised from Cory Martin at Trail County Highway that there is some, is it some grant money available for bridge replacement? And if, if we find out that there's issues under the bridge at the park that need to be repaired or if it runs in too much money, we can get 100% funding to replace the bridge. That's with the grant, if we, if we qualify for the grant. So right now, we're just waiting for the state bridge inspection, which was done this year. We're just waiting for the report to come back to see what is happening under there. We know there's some issues under there, but we don't know at this point what it is. But if it comes to a point where damages are... Where it's going to be a large amount of money to fix, my thoughts it would be for the future to replace the bridge. Because if we can get zero, zero grant to do it, I think we should jump on it. Because it's, it's for a future... It's going to need to be replaced. It was built in '34, it's, it's an old bridge. So that's where we're at with that right now. We'll just wait for their inspection report and we'll go from there.
What do you do, Dave?
I was just going to say thank you for looking into that. I'm a park board, so keep me updated on that.
I will, yeah.
Any improvements that can be done there, I think would be pretty well welcomed.
Yeah, you know, and I talked to, talked to them about, you know, as far as a historic bridge, but they don't know if the state will, will allow that or not.
I'm, just from personal experience and some of the issues that we've had to deal with on there, one of them being the end of that bridge, that walk, that sidewalk, that's probably not even close to ADA.
Right.
Meeting ADA requirements, with the age that it was installed at.
Yeah.
I know we have problems with ice dams in the spring and that just kind of exaggerates some of the flooding that goes down, goes on down in the park. So there's some things that we can do being that bridge, if there's funding available for that, let's definitely look into that.
And I guess the other thing is I, I asked Cory, I said, well, you know, would this be a grant if we wanted to repair it? And he didn't figure that, that it would be, it would be full replacement.
I, I know we've looked at a few things. We've kind of hodgepodge the walkway on the sidewalk. I know some of the, the curb rails at the sidewalk, I think there may be some concerns with safety.
Yeah.
Things like that.
And there, the way it works is the county takes care of all the paperwork and their engineering firm takes care of all of it. There's nothing that the, the city really has to, other than approve to apply for the grant, I guess. So I think it's a, I think it's a pretty good deal if we, if we can get money to do it and...
I think that would be beneficial.
Yeah. So that's all I have on that.
Thank you, Dave.
Yes.
You know, one thing I've always noticed, Dave, is that, that bridge you're talking about, the amount of logs and stuff that are slammed up against that and then you get that heavy water coming through there.
Yep.
I mean, is that, is that raising havoc? Is that...
Boy, absolutely.
Can somebody clean that out? I know like, it's not far away more yet, but I mean, they clean out that river down by the bridges down there?
The county was just down in there and cleaned all the debris out of there.
This wall?
Yeah, this wall.
Okay, I haven't been down there since the summer.
But in the spring, if we get high water again, it'll all be back there again. It's just the way it is, but I'm sure it'll be... I would bet money that it gets designed different if, if it's, we get a new bridge in there.
That, that was kind of one of my main concerns was if, if we do end up going down the road where there's funding available and we can replace that bridge, maybe if we could get that raised up some way, shape or form, so that way we don't have near the flooding levels that we do. I can't remember that it was this year, but in previous years, the initial flood and it's the ice that backs it up and then it ends up to the dike. Once the ice is melted, then you don't see it one over the dike.
Right. Yeah, I'm, I'm sure that they're going to have one and all the input from, you know, like the park board and everything.
Yeah, I can't speak for the entire board, but I'm in support, so I'll handle it.
Okey-dokey, I'll keep you in touch with that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Mike, do you have anything?
Nothing tonight.
Paul?
An HE DC meeting that was canceled. And as far as beautification, obviously nothing going on right now. Electrical, still working on load controls, so if you haven't scheduled your, your appointment to get those changed out, please do that. That's all I have.
Okay. And Jim is gone today, so we'll skip there, there. JR, do you have anything tonight? Ashley?
Okay, the, I'm just, the girls in the office and I were wondering if we're going to follow for holiday hours, if we're following the county. Their hours are Friday, the 23rd close at noon, then close Monday, December 26th, and then they have January 2nd off. So wondering if we usually do follow theirs? Just wondering if we're going to follow symptoms to do the same thing again?
Our book, we had those dates all picked, right?
I believe so.
Yeah, it's just it falls on a weekend, so we were kind of, we weren't really sure about Friday. We knew about Monday and we knew we're sure about January, but it was Friday before Christmas Eve, if that one would fall under our handbook, since it's just Christmas Eve, but we do usually follow the county.
We always do.
Thoughts?
All motion to approve the whole counties.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moved by Mike, seconded by Dave. Any other discussion? Paul?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
A yes for me.
The true up, we have it finally scheduled for January 30th. Miranda Cleavins from A2S has been helping us get all those numbers figured out. So everybody's finally on board. It took a while to get everybody on the same page and get a date where like about 15 to 20 of us can meet. And so that will be here on the 30th. And then for H, they were wondering if possibly, they're learning how to do parliamentary procedure and they struggle a little bit. And so I had said I would ask if they would be able to come and either shadow or if they'd come to watch so that they can see exactly like what their positions are, just so they can see how a real meeting with parliamentary, or not real, their, their meetings are real, but more advanced meetings are held so they can kind of understand what their roles are.
I think it's open. We've allowed boy scouts to come before, so.
Okay. That's all I got.
Steve, do you have anything for us tonight?
A2S has a change order for the USD Water and Sewer Project. Two things we're going to change. One would be a change order, modify the completion date. And then the second would be the first payment approval, which are in your packets. And they're extending it to May 31st. And delays are for delivery and other things. And the contractor's hoping to plate boring across the interstate next week. And the first payment is for $69,906.70, and that was for to bore into the park under 81 in the river, the one that we had to get done right away. And we'll do it out of the that fund that's already set up, which has our interim fund and our ARCA funds and USDA grants.
I'll make the motion to accept it.
Dave makes the motion to accept both the change order and the pay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mike seconds. Is there any other discussion? Mike?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
A yes for me. All right. DC, Wednesday, as far as I know, they're supposed to be appearing in court, the two that we have, unless that's changed, do you know, Steve?
I'm going to schedule last time I saw.
Okay. So I'm planning to attend just to see how things go, so I can give you guys an update. We'll move on to old business. Ashley, is there anything update on the disaster relief?
No, last week he was getting all our stuff together and I meet with him tomorrow morning at 7:30. As far as I know, unless he tells me that he needs something else, to my knowledge, he has everything that he needs at this point.
Then we're on to the second meeting of our snow ordinance.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Dave, seconded by Mike. Is there any discussion? Paul was out of the question, or is there a second?
Just give a second, okay.
All right. So that is for updating our snow ordinance. Are those two portions of it? Any other questions? Dave?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
A yes for me, so motion carries. Next item of business is under new business, our airport authority agreement approval, John. Is it Aslan? It's on?
I don't know, Justin got it really fast.
Okay. And we do have that recommendation from the airport authority. I have motion to approve all of that.
Make the motion.
Mike moves, is there a second?
I'll second.
Paul seconds. Is there any other discussion? Paul?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
A yes for me. Next item of business is our remark technology service agreement. That's our annual agreement for the computers and networking that we have. That is in your packets. And if you do approve, I have a motion to approve.
How long?
Go ahead. I'm just curious if there was any changes in it from last time.
I don't, I don't think so. I didn't see any. He didn't say it went up and I guess I didn't compare it to last year. It stays pretty much the same. And Joe does a lot.
Joe?
Joe does a lot for our, our networking and our, everything to do with the computers and the security and he is, he does a lot. He also helps out the park board with their stuff as well too. And I know he also does the county. And we've had him for several, several years, is my understanding.
And this is all IT support?
Yep.
So we don't know what it was last year?
I would have to look it up. He sent it to me at last minute on Friday and today I was busy with everybody in my office and phone calls, so I didn't get a chance to look at it.
I believe it's within...
Reason.
Hundred or $200 if there is a...
Have we ever gone out to compare like other bids to or no?
He has been with us forever. I would not feel comfortable changing. You, we call him and ask him to help us with something and he's right there. He comes and drops off equipment. He'll come right to your... When I was sick with COVID, he came right to my house and dropped off a mouse and keyboard so I could work from home. He's, he, like I said, he does the county, he does the park board.
He works with the state on...
He works...
On the state budget plan too, doesn't he?
Uh, that part I don't, that part I don't know. I guess I don't know.
I know he did at the county, if he needed something.
But he, yeah, he does a lot.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any problem.
I'm just curious, there's a lot of that company, so I just never heard of them. Right, no, I understand.
If so, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? Mike can second. Moved by Dave, seconded by Paul. Any other discussion? Mike?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
A yes for me. I gave you guys a blue packet with, if you want to pull out on the right-hand side of the packet is kind of the updated that I had looked at. Also on the left-hand side, if you guys had reviewed that, we'll talk about that a little bit. Looking at this, we've had a mess for four years and we still have a mess to clean up. We are off on numbers. If you look at the first few pages, that's page... Seven, eight, nine and 10. What I did is put, basically so they're all together. What the numbers are, what was published in the banner, what was put in our 21 budget, what was put in the 22 budget, what was put in our 23 budget that we previously approved, and then what I knew of the balance as of, from the balance sheet from those same dates. And as you can see, they're off. Some of them are $100 and I did work with Mark a little bit, trying to figure out if, you know, it could be off and yes, they could be. But as you guys can see, there's some bigger numbers than that. Moving forward, if you scoot back to page three and four, and I see Ashley printed it off for you today, that sheet, which is the cash balance sheet, that is one thing that I'm going to ask that we get at least once a month to look at. That was the cash balance that is in by the county. So that will help us figure out where we're at. Thanks, Steve. If you look at the statement for revenues and expenditures that Ashley handed out for the November, for the month of November. If you looked at the end of the budget, or the end of any one of those nine items, take the general budget, look at the beginning balance for, or the ending balance. It's the bidding, sorry, it's beginning balance. You look at that and compared it to what the beginning balance says on our cash balance statement.
The numbers on the bottom of those cash balance sheets, on the fund statement sheets?
Nope, I'm talking about the beginning balance.
On the fund statement sheets?
Correct.
Those are wrong. I've said that from the get-go. That's what Mark and I have been working on. I've always said, do not look at that bottom portion of those sheets. You need to look at the fund, the expenditures and the revenues only because those bottom balances are off. I have said that for months. That's what Mark and I are working on and that's what I'm having to go back for two years and redo all the fund statement sheets because Mark showed me how to put a summary sheet on there and how to update those balances. So those balances are off. So you can't look at those balances. And I've said that several times, actually.
Which is fine, Ashley, but if we're looking at, if this is the only thing that we see, we don't get a true number of what we're looking at. And as you can see, what's in here compared to what the cash balance statement is, it makes a big difference.
So for, if we're looking at page three and we have the 2022 beginning balance, the next column is receipts. Is that what we physically received in 2022? Or what we are estimating that we're going to receive? Cause I see the 2023 city budget amendment proposal, but then I see the cash balance December 2022.
So yes, it'd be the same thing that Ashley here, the first line is the beginning balance, second line is receipts that we've taken to date. Transfers are actually the general entries, which would be cash and transfer accounts. So you'll see that that's a zero. And then the next item is the payroll statement.
Okay, so those dispersments are actually coming from different accounts to balance it out?
The dispersments are the bills that we pay.
Dispersments are bills.
Those have been paid.
The expenses, yep. That's what's been paid.
Okay, so if I look through some of these breakdowns and stuff, like, uh, 214 HEDC has that beginning balance and then the receipts and then dispersments. So they spent $230,000 in 2022?
Yes. That is what, that's how much it shows in the band system that, that bills that have went out. However, those can be transfers also, so it's not just the, so the dispersments show, oh, it's hard to explain. Cause we're, we also move. How do I explain that?
The funds?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. So this is the bills, pay-in, transfer, kind of rub Peter paper.
Right.
Okay.
Because we, so we, especially for like HEDC, the lodging tax, um, the airport, we get funds. We get, we get funds from those accounts and then we have to trans, it's like a pay-in payout.
Yep.
Almost like a bank, if you think of it that way.
So Ashley, if you looked at the sheet that you printed out for us today for 1219. And you go to the ending balance. Look at the ending balance on page three.
You said today, there's only two pages.
Page three in, in this packet or the second page on this, on the one that you handed out.
Yep.
Which would be the 2022 beginning balance, which I assume that shouldn't change, correct?
For what?
Our 2022 beginning balance should never change, correct?
It should not unless there is something that got missed and we have to go back and put it in and do a restore. Or if we have, if we miss something from the prior year, we can always go back and put it in.
Was there anything that happened in the last two weeks that you did that?
It's not just me in that account. It's three of us that work in that.
Is there anybody in the office that?
I don't know, I'd have to ask them. I don't know off the top of my head. So it could be, be, since Julie was out, there's things that she has to fix for utility billing. So it's very possible that, yeah, it, for the month, it could have changed.
So the beginning 2022 balance would change?
It depends on what all gets entered and if it's in, entered in the wrong year or not.
Cause you're showing from, when I asked for this sheet for the cash balance that goes to December from the ninth, set, uh, the eighth to the 19th, that our beginning balance went up from 3,825,548 to 4,121,990.
I would have to look. You can't put me on the spot here, especially without the answer. But I, I'd have to look and I'd have to talk to Julie and I'd have to look in our system and see what's all been done.
So if you look at this as a whole, you can tell that we are completely not knowing where we're truly at and not knowing where we can move forward until we get this figured out.
Yeah, cause I see on electrical, it shows 653 and on one and 482 on another one. Thousand. On electrical. You'll have to find that, find that out.
Yep.
Cause some of them are right on and some of them aren't. Do you know on the HEDC side, do they include dispersments of, of everything to HEDC? Because that, that account, I always thought that was HEDC, HEDC sales tax.
The, the HEDC is that for, um, for all, anything we contribute to HEDC and that, all the payments and stuff come out of there, but yes, that is for the sales tax also.
Okay, then they have line on, on, when they, when, what they, each one is going for then? You know, like if it's sales tax or if it's advertising or something like that?
It should be in the fund statement sheet. If it's just a, on your fund statement sheet, if it's just like a, a round number, a 300 number or a 400 number, then the line items usually get added, but I can get you that, Paul.
Cause that's pretty important on the HEDC side, HEDC side that we know, cause I know we haven't taken in $230,000 in sales tax. So I think it's important that we know exactly what that, what that is. If it's going towards advertising, you know, the city is doing with HEDC, so that we have those lines. On the expenditure side, you know, right now we got four, on this one here from November, we got 428 advertising and then 810, which I'm.
That's the contribution side of it.
You know, so.
Hey, Paul?
No.
Are you saying that we have less in what we're saying, Charles?
Well, I, I couldn't tell you. I, I know that we have less in sales tax dollars that we've taken in. But if they're including things like, I know HEDC splits costs for the city for the billboard up by Grand Forks. So if that's put in there too, then that's going to kind of skew the numbers. So what I'm asking is that we make sure we split them out so we know how much of HEDC is sales tax and how much is advertising, whatever, whatever they're writing a check for, so we know what it's for.
So I did sit down with JR and John on last week and we tried to figure out how can we fix this? How can we move forward? How do we get ourselves back where we began, where we're at? And I know that we, in the past, tried to do the, use the state auditors to help go through and double-check everything. But as you can see, we're not going in the right direction. It does look a little bit better today than it did a couple of weeks ago, based on the ending balance. As you can see, it was, it's come up a little bit. So that helps. But what we kind of proposed, or what we think we probably should do is make sure that we get 2022 from a starting point. Figure out, to make sure that whatever we have in the bank, whatever's in fund accounting, whatever's on the budget matches. Otherwise, it's going to be hard for us to go any further because we've went two years and we've only gotten two years done. We're not too up to date. We can't figure out what our rates are going to be. If we can't get that done, we can't figure out how much we really truly need to have the next year. If we don't get that done, we can't figure out what truly we can do.
What seems to be the biggest problem when you're, when you're trying to get the balance?
I honestly can't tell you. I don't know enough to intuit to figure it out. I just know that what's there, the numbers don't add up. They don't match. And they're off. And we can't keep going this way. Chuck?
A suggestion, and don't misinterpret it the wrong way, any of you. I'd like to have you pull each one of the commissioners and ask them what should be done with this problem. Is it something we're just going to kind of wash our hands and make sure the numbers are there? Are we going to bring it to head? Are we going to put a deadline on it? Two weeks, we bring in a, forget about state auditor. I, I see auditors that come in and all they do is read the bottom figures and cancel them off. Getting an uncertified audit in here and when I used to get audited at John Deere and another place, I had to take my vacation, I wasn't even in there. So, uh, we pull over and ask them, what's in their mind? How do they want to get this fixed? These guys is going to decide it for the rest of the community. I'm not.
I can tell you that JR, John and I are, is to have this trued up by February 6th meeting. So I think it's our first meeting in February.
If you plan on the office staff having it, that's nearly impossible unless you guys let us do what we have to do and not add anything else and stay out of our office and don't email us all the time and call us. Then we can possibly have it by March. I have talked to Paul and him and I have decided, have discussed a March deadline, but January or February is not going to happen. We started.
When was the last time you balanced, so who's correct?
We have been still fixing from when Matt was here. So we're going forward and I have been working with Mark Forseth on that. And it's just, it's a lot to, it's a lot to do. And Paul and I have talked and I can set office hours, but I'm not going to shut my door for a month and not be available to the community. That's, that's not right to them. But Paul and I did talk about shutting, I can make office hours every week. So each day I'm able to just focus on that one thing, but then I need it so I don't have extra stuff put on my plate. And the office staff needs to be able to do what they need to do to allow me to have that time strictly just on the fund statements and everything that goes along with doing that, because it's a process.
Was it messed up in the former auditor bracket? Has it been messed up since before that?
No, it was on track when Leslie was still here. It was from when he, he quit doing all the, he did, he quit doing all the spreadsheets. He wasn't giving financials, is my understanding. There was a lot that he should have been keeping track of that wasn't. And so for the first six months, I didn't know any of it. I am just now probably comfortable enough to where I understand, okay, this is why Mark told me to do this and this is why we do this spreadsheet for this and this report is for this. Everything that I have learned has been pretty much self-taught with the guidance of Mark. So I haven't been working on it for the last two years. It has been maybe the last year where I've actually been able to focus and actually understand what is going on and trying to fix it. But it's really hard for our office to get anything done with a bunch of new stuff being thrown at us all the time. And today I almost didn't get the fund statement sheets done because throughout the day I had five people in my office. Um, three of them, well, two of them were commissioners, one commissioner was on the phone. Jim has called me several times today, off and on. I've had to talk to Mark Forseth about things. That all takes time. And how am I supposed to get anything actually accomplished when that happens?
Could I, can I just make a suggestion? You don't have to go by it, but, um, like Olomone Nelson, who I've had for 47 years. Can you, would it be feasible, would it make sense to bring them in? And get to the bottom of it, rather than have it linger on, linger on? Because they're capable of doing it.
Well, it's, it's an option, Rick.
Huh?
It's an option.
I think, you know, I think, uh, just from listening to Ashley and listening to you guys, you know, it's not, nothing's getting, the answers aren't coming out the way you want them. But I guess if it was, it's a business and if I was in business, if I was having that problem, I'd bring an outside source and, and getting it up to date. And then it, then it would be up to whoever's your auditor to make sure it stays that way. But get a one-time expenditure, get it cleared up. I would do it. That's just a sleep question. You say you haven't had time in the last two years to keep up with all this. While as the auditor, shouldn't you have time to do it?
It's more than just, it's, they have their own daily task, Chuck. It's more than just, it's just more than just a couple of things. The auditor's office, I did not know this until I started working there, but the auditor's office takes on a lot more than I think anybody in the public. I don't think half of these guys even understand how much actually goes on and goes through that office. We deal with the public on a regular basis. Some days the phones ring off the hook constantly and you're answering them constantly. Other days, you're, other days are quiet and you actually get work done. But we do more than just accept bills and do. But we do more than just accept bills and do utility billing and...
I realize that and I can let you go on and excuse me for interrupting, but in the past, we had auditors here that seemed to get everything done on a timely basis. Forgetting about Mr. Muck's murder, I don't want to get me wrong at this meeting. There's got to be a catch-up point where, as Rick was indicating, this thing, every month, when I ran businesses, every month I had to furnish a P and L and it, it had to be right.
Right.
It couldn't be around a hundred dollars here and fifty dollars there. And, you know, I realize it's a penis compared to the city, but at one time, it was over twenty-eight million dollar business. And, uh, the guy I answered to, uh, he made no bones about it. He had to stay there till midnight to get something to balance the night before our board meeting. We did it.
Chuck, the difference?
That's why I'm asking the rest of the members here to speak up and say how they would like to see this thing handled and brought to a head. And if you're going to wait till March, then it'll be like condemning houses. It'll be April, and it'll be May, and it'll be June. I don't want to be negative about this, but there's got to be a deadline and there's got to be consequences after that.
John Nelson?
There was, I want to say something. There, the difference is, I was handed a mess. I, if I was handed something that was clean and pristine from like Mark, I would have no problem keeping up with it. But that's not the case. And until you sit in on that side of the desk, I guess I don't feel that anybody has a right to judge until they've actually been in that chair. I wish it was up to date. And once it gets up to date, it will be a lot easier to maintain. But right now, it's not. And I have asked for help and I have asked for them to not put more, more stuff on my plate multiple times and it hasn't happened. So if the, if it is a commissioner's choice to get rid of me, that is their choice.
I didn't say that.
Well, that's what you, it kind of sounded like it. But that is up to them and they can make a choice on what they want to do. Like I said, I have talked to Paul, I have talked to Mike, I have talked to Dave. And I told them that I, I could, I can get it done by March first. With help and with that, people staying out of my office. And I'm willing to set office hours. I'm trying to meet in the middle here. Throwing somebody else into our office is just going to make things worse right now, is my own opinion. But that's up to you guys.
Who's, uh...
Just a second, Rick.
Who's got the portfolio?
For what?
Who's got Ashley's portfolio?
I have the financial portfolio.
And the personnel.
Just to reiterate what I was saying. I had three different things going, businesses going at one time. I used Overmone Nelson. I'm not advocating to use them or to, or use anybody. But every week, they put them on a larger spreadsheet. Every, every three months, that's time. And I, I just think, um, whether it's going on, uh, road or something, I think if it was me, if I was a commissioner right now, I'd say, let's, let's get this cleaned up and do it now and give Ashley the tools she needs and get it caught up and then, then it's up to her to keep it up. That would be my opinion.
I agree. I think that we need to get it cleaned up and, and I think the auditor's office can do it. But I think they, I think we should get them some type of help to do it. In March, I don't know, that's a three months out.
Mike?
If we can get it done sooner, if we can pay somebody, put it upon if they got time to do it. You know, we're coming into pack season now. Probably fix, get it backed up, but...
Paul?
I, I think we just need to get, I'm not really, at this point, you know, we've just started with this. We've got a lot of questions that we haven't been asking. At this point, I don't, I don't think we need to bring in something like that at this point. I think we just need to concentrate on what we've got to fix. You know, the thing that, some of the things that get me is, is I understand, I understand the previous thing, but I still look at the fact that, you know, when we go into 2021 or 2022, when we start that year, you know, we should, in our accounts, we should have a certain number. And anything that we see in disbursements through that year, those, I would think that are, you know, that those last two years should be pretty consistent because they are new. And we have beginning balances. So I guess I don't really understand why the beginning balances, you know, would change. And, uh, and these are just some simple questions, I think, that, that I would like to see us all sit down as a commission and kind of go through, okay, what, where do we see the problems? And, uh, and if we have Ashley and Julie there at the meetings and have access to that information, then we can probably, probably get a lot of answers to a lot of questions going forward. But I think we need to get everybody in one room and we need to talk about it. And we need to have access to where Ashley and Julie can answer those questions when we have them. That's, that's all I would move forward with to start with now. Once we do that, if we can't get those questions answered, or she doesn't feel she can answer those questions, then we would maybe look at bringing somebody else in and doing something there. But that's the way I view it, so.
Nicole?
Um, well, I really need to under, I'm kind of a detail person, so I like to understand the whole moving parts of this of how, if it, if this is just spreadsheets or if, because I'm, I'm not a fan of spreadsheets, I'm sorry. I'm a financial guru when it comes to software programs and spreadsheets never are accurate enough for me. So I just need to understand the working scenes behind this of where this pulls from, how it's entered, if it's reconciled, like, everything should balance out if it's reconciled. And it should be reconciled every month, just like they were talking about P and L's and stuff. That should be something that was, you know, is, so I just don't know how this process works. Like, I don't know what software is being used, I don't know how we're pulling the numbers, how we're entering them. Um, at this time of the year, um, I'm going to say it's probably going to be extremely hard to find it outside anybody. Um, especially when we're talking accountants, tax advisors, anything like that. It is overloaded, the system's overloaded right now. So I kind of want to know more about the process.
If you want to come in, I can show you the program, you know, and how we pull all the numbers.
Okay, I'll do that. I'm on vacation next week.
Well, if there would be something that would be good for all of us, they'd want to learn, they want to know.
Yeah.
Instead of showing everybody individually, you know, just get it, put it up in the office over there in the commission room and kind of go through it, you know?
And I don't think we're going to get all the answers tonight anyway, so.
Don't you think, Paul, that, uh, you'd be better off having, I don't care who you'd get, having somebody do it? Because you're going to sit in a, in a circle and you're going to be talking about it and it's going to be this and that. And I'll bet you five bucks you'll walk out of there and still won't have it solved. Why not get somebody in and get it cleaned up? And then start from there. And then if you've got questions, ask the accountant. Ask him the questions. Why is this or why is that? Or have him explain it to you when he's done, where the problem's at. Then you can make an educated decision.
I think the hard part about that, Rick, is if it's a system, it's not for sure that the accountant's going to know what that system is, is my fear.
Uh, I don't believe that, I really don't.
Because there's quite a few accountants out there that will only use one system. But I don't know what system this is, that's the thing. I don't know what these working pieces are. It's hard to say, to really say, yes, let's hire you to do that.
Well, JR, you're in that office, you know. Don't you think he's a pretty sharp broker?
He might be, but I don't touch numbers.
Yeah, I think he's a very, very intelligent.
I'd venture against you, wouldn't even want to waste time with it. He's got so much going on.
You can take it back after Cole's comment. Final results available, because I don't know if there's anyone available right now, or at least...
It's tough right now.
Yep.
So could we pick an afternoon or someday and go just, all of us sit down and just look on this, not do anything else?
We can, yes. I mean...
Let's ask one smiley and... Is everything, the checkbook been balanced every month? Has the water, electrical bills been balanced every month? Just a question. What are we behind on, everything? Do we have any answers or?
Yep, because we have to go from, it goes from the past. The spreadsheets are rolling spreadsheets. So they continually are, it pulls from the past year. It's hard to explain with act, without actually being able to show the software and the spreadsheets and where you have to pull this number from that number and why this number is here because of this reason. It's spreadsheets, it's our Bannion software, it's the utility billing side, it's PSN. All of that gets pulled in. So it's very hard. If you're behind with trying to fix things, it's hard to, you can't just say, oh, I'm going to reconcile this month, even though we are still back in 2021 trying to get everything to balance. I'm going to reconcile this month. It's hard to do that with all the moving parts. And it's, I know it's hard to, it's hard to understand and it's hard to explain without being able to show you guys. I wish I could like physically have the system here and show you, but that's just not possible.
Is this a system we bought two years ago when you got this?
No, this has been since, I think Mark Forseth implemented this system.
So we're going back and working before is what I'm trying to get at.
Yep, before everything broke loose, like three years ago.
How about the, if nothing's balanced or we don't know, how about the checkbook? Is that, do we know where that's at?
We, we do go through that. Every, every day, we open that up and we do go through and make sure this check is through and that check is through and...
Is that balanced every year? Is that, is it balancing?
Every month.
For the year, for the month?
An actual reconciliation, we haven't gotten those done, but we make sure that this check is through. We go through our, our APs, things like that.
So when was the last reconciliation done?
And it's, I'm on, uh, June of 2021, May or June of 2021.
Did you have questions?
I just want the commissioners to consider the impacts that Ashley's office being behind this having on the community. And not an appropriate time for me to discuss. Now I can wait until the citizens addressing the commission. But it's impacting the individuals within the community of Ashley's office being behind with the utility billing and other concerns. So at some point, I agree with Rick and Chuck that we need to get somebody in here to get this addressed or we need to get Ashley help. It's clear to me that she's drowning right now and needs the commission's assistance to get somebody in there as another assistant, to get a third party in to clean up the disaster that she's been handling. Because I have some serious concerns about what's going on with my facility.
That's all I, just a suggestion.
So we've, in the best analogy, I can say that we started out with a can the size of this pop bottle. And today, we're kicking a fifty-five gallon barrel down the road. And this is snowballing from past history and I'm not blaming anybody. But at some point, we have to move forward and move on and try to get this fixed. Because we're not being our due diligence. We've added people to the office to try to help alleviate some of this. We've tried shutting down now this so that it isn't open to the public. But as you can see, us sitting here tonight, you, all five of us, did you have a true understanding of what the financials were based on what we were given? That's a yes or no question.
No.
Nope.
Prior to today, was there, did you feel you had a true handle on what the financials were of our city?
No.
No.
And I didn't either. And when I looked on page, if you look at page four, that worksheet, when I asked for a number for Riverwalk to see what was being spent, this cash balance sheet is the sheet that kicked this whole thing off for me to understand that we have a huge problem. And I'm sorry, Ashley, if I asked for a lot of questions, but I had to wrap my head around it and it took me three months to get it figured out. And it's a big deal for me. I've spent a ton of hours trying to figure this out, trying to wrap my head around it and understand it. Part of this is it wasn't presented to the commission in a way that we could understand. Not blaming you, I'm not blaming whoever, just saying it wasn't presented to the commission so that we fully understood what was going on with the financial system in our community.
And Leva, you have to understand, I'm still learning and so learning how and how bad it still is. You, sometimes I feel like you think that I should just know all the answers. And I'm barely two years in and it takes a good five years to even get an understanding of this position on a good note with not a mess. And so the best that I could do was tell you that it's not okay, that the funds were not okay, which Julie and I have both said that. But again, with all the work that goes on in our office, it's hard to get everything done, let alone get it caught up. And it's not that I'm not trying and I appreciate the work that you put into this budget. I just wish that you would have came to my office and we could have tried to do it together instead of throw it at me and make me feel like, like I wasn't doing my job when there's a lot more to my job than just this. And I know it's a big deal and I am trying. I am really, really, really trying to understand it. But it's hard to do when I don't get the time allowed to try and fix it the way that Mark has taught me to try and fix it, who did this job for seventeen years. So I am trying. It's just not apparently in the timely fashion that you need it. And I know it's a big deal. I'm not stupid.
Do you have a degree in accounting, Ashley?
No, I do not.
Okay, I just wanted to know.
I have a business, I have an associate's business degree with an emphasis on administration.
So Ashley, I don't want to get into it tonight with you at all. I don't want to go back and forth, but our schedules don't line up. And when I'm free, when we first started this, you were not. I also gave this to you and asked you to look at it. I can see when you opened it up and when you looked at it.
I printed it off.
All, all asked you if you ever looked at it. So if you'd really want to take a true insight into what I had did, but at some point, I have to move forward and push this on. I told the commission a long time ago that I hope to get this done before now. And at some point, I had to push through and say, enough is enough of pushing this barrel down the road. And this is where we're at. And so we have to have a point where we're going to move forward. We have to have a plan where we're going to move forward. And I don't know if we'll get the answers tonight because it's, it's a lot. And there's this, if you guys want to look at this section. Those are the last three budgets in this month's financial statements that I went through and tried to compile so that you guys could look at it. And I understand that numbers can be off, but they shouldn't be off five hundred thousand dollars or three hundred thousand dollars. That doesn't make sense to me. And so if you need help and you need to shut the office down, your office down, meaning your office, not Ash, not Julie, not Sarah, or you need to put more workload on Sarah if she can handle it... if she can handle it, or if we need to bring somebody else in to help, then you need to tell us now.
I have.
No, you haven't.
Yes, I have.
Commissioners?
Ashley asked.
I don't remember asking.
I have asked, we asked to have the office shut down. I have said more than once to stop putting work on my plate. I'm not gonna say anything else because I'm getting messages from somebody that I need to stay calm. So you decide what you wanna do and I'll help you.
Do you want us to get your help?
Yes. I need him to stay out of my office for me to do stuff. That's the help I need. If you want third party, by all means, go for it.
Commissioners?
Well, I think we need to sit down as commissioners in a room and go over this before we, before we decide that. I think we just need to sit on just this, nothing else, just work on this.
Mike?
Go from there.
I'll be gone next Sunday.
I don't know that any of us want to go on Sunday.
Saturday, Sunday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday.
You really think that if, if you figure that an accountant wouldn't understand it, that any one of you will? I think you're in place to.
Rick, I'm not saying that accountant wouldn't understand it. Accountants are pretty backed up right now. And I do have a business degree and I do have a certification in accounting too. But it's, the system is overloaded at this time of the year and I just don't know if it's gonna happen fast enough. But I think understanding the system and how it runs is a better way to give you answers to what goes on inside. Otherwise, I don't know. I could hire someone and help her out, but is that gonna be the end all be all? I don't know. Is that gonna help her learn?
Is it gonna help us learn?
That's just it.
We have to, we have to kind of wrap up what you wanted to do one more. But we also have to set a deadline on this that we can't keep moving. We've already went two years without having a true number. And so we gotta keep working. Yes, Chuck?
Yeah, no, I guess you're absolutely right. There's gotta be a deadline and I just reiterated before, you know damn well it ain't gonna be done by February or it won't be done by March. We're all in the same boat. I was on the board here for seven years and I admit, there were things that I didn't understand on the budget, but we had a guy in town by the name Ovo Ormo that come to the meeting and by God, by the time he left, we understood what was going on. I'm with Rick, as I suggested at the beginning of the meeting, opposite to what she thinks there ain't people qualified out there that'll come in. I can name off a half a dozen auditing firms that would be more than happy to come up here and take the city's money and bring everything to Ed within less than two weeks, I'll bet. But you decide what you wanna do, it's taxpayers' money, but you know, as was said before, we can't keep kicking the can down the road. There's, there's, life has gotta go on. There's decisions gotta be made and some decisions in life aren't easy to make.
And I'm not saying that, that could be our option to do that, but I think as the commissioners, we should sit down and go through it first and then go from there. That's, that's my thoughts.
What are you gonna go through there? I mean, I'm not, it makes no difference, but what would you go through? What would you be looking for? What would you be looking for? Would you start?
Well, that's what, none of us understand this. Maybe if we sat down and went, you know, sat down in a room with us, maybe we could learn a little bit more about the, you know, some of this, these funds and.
Why bring, why not bring in an auditor that can ask pointed questions?
And I agree with you. I agree with you, but.
I know you guys are in charge of everything that's gonna happen, but you know, get, get the cat off your back, let somebody that knows why debts and credits have to come out in the end and whatever. It's gonna cost you a couple of dollars, but who knows what has been kicked down the road so far.
Yeah. How are you gonna get a budget, how are you gonna get a budget done until you have the true figures?
Correct. I, I, I'm not, I'm not disputing that.
I.
So would next Wednesday, or this Wednesday or next Wednesday work for any of you?
Next would work for me.
Twenty eighth?
Yep.
Twenty eighth? And would you like to do it? Next Wednesday at one o'clock? Twenty eighth? So then we'll hold off what's on the left side of your packet until we make a decision.
I'm curious as to how many other times this has been on the agenda since we've been taking a can down the street? How many times has this been on the agenda, Rick? How many times has this been on the agenda?
What's that?
This, uh, this stuff we're talking about tonight?
Well, you know, the only thing I know is that before you came on, they were talking about they had a problem then, before Ashley got on. That's, and so it's been, I mean, I knew that when they got rid of, uh, the other guy. They had a problem then. That's when I first heard about it, Paul.
Okay.
So how long's that been?
Well, I don't know. It's just the first time that we've really, that I've dealt with it, so.
How, how long's it been since he left?
What's that?
How long's it been? Huh?
Two years.
Yeah, so you had a problem since then, I guess, yeah. That's, the problem probably existed, but nobody ever mentioned it. I guess, you know, that's to answer your question, Paul. I mean, I can remember hearing about it back then. Do you remember that?
I, I don't, I don't remember. So, so.
Julie, there'll be a special commission meeting on January 30th.
Twenty eighth.
Or twenty eighth at one o'clock.
January or December?
December, December 28th at one o'clock. I was looking at the wrong date again. Uh, we'll probably do it in the commission chair.
And I commend each and every one of you commissioners for wanting to spend extra time doing it, trying to learn it. Don't get me wrong.
So with that, I believe that we should hold off on Tyler Technologies Utility Software until we have the budget figured out.
Yes.
I also believe that we should hold off on city raises, but we can back retroactive to the beginning of the year until we have the budget figured out. Would all commissioners agree on that?
Yes.
Yes.
The ones that we didn't talk about, are we doing the same Christmas gift as we have done in years past for the staff? Yes. Move by Mike, second by Dave to do the same as years past for. You'll have to go back and look and see. I can't remember it somewhere.
I wonder if it, I wonder if it wasn't, was it Hillsborough Box?
It's Hillsborough Box, but I, but I don't remember how much. Is there any other discussion? Nicole?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Paul? Yes, Mike? Any asks for me? Mike and Dave. Last thing that Mark had told me that we probably should think about doing and we can do that today. If you look on the cash balance sheet in the emergency fund, currently we have $25,674.81. We would enter team resolution that we move that into the street funds and declare a snow emergency for those funds to be moved. The whole balance.
Where are we looking at?
Two oh six, emergency fund would go into two oh one. Yes.
I'll make a motion on that.
Is there a second? Move by Dave, second to my Mike to move the $25,674.81 for resolution and declare a snow, snow emergency from a slight storm. And continuation of this storm. Is there any other discussion? Paul? Yes. Dave?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Any asks for me?
Um, so I don't need to, you know, rehash. I've learned a lot in, in the discussions tonight about the budgets and the concerns in Ashley's office, but I just wanted to come and talk about my utility billing, billing and some of the frustrations that I've had over the last 15 months. Um, so approximately 15 months ago, I don't have the date off the top of my head. Um, I had somebody else's payment applied to my account that resulted in one of these little angry red cards. Um, and then, you know, we were able to resolve it. Um, a few months ago, I had it happen again, but this time I didn't get a bill. I didn't get a usage statement or anything. I still don't have that number, um, so I don't know what my usage was for November of this year. Um, I have had a number of edits to my account that I did receive some paperwork from the city for. Um, and that kind of explained the mispayment again, somebody else's payment applying to my account and then it actually resulted in a credit, but then it's been adjusted. And then I have a, just like a pen edited bill from the city that I received on the balance that I should be paying because it again was, the balance was credited to my account, but then deducted again from my account. So now it shows a $466 balance and then put handwritten $246 and some change. I have since made that payment, um, through PSM and I have the confirmation for that, but then I received a no payment card, again in the mail, also indicating the 1.75% interest. Um, so like I had reiterated earlier, the issues that are happening with the budget are starting to trickle into the community. Um, and my understanding and talking with some of the ladies in the office, that I'm not alone in this, that there are at least five other community members that are experiencing misbilling, mispayments, as well as, you know, payments not being applied even though they've been withdrawn from my bank account. Um, so hopefully I can work with Ashley and Sarah and get some corrections made because, you know, as my wife and I try to run a daycare out of our home, I need to have accurate billing and I need to, you know, understand my expenses to run a business successfully as well. So I would appreciate any assistance from the commission and from Ashley on getting this resolved and hoping that this continues to not happen.
That's the issue and Levi, I know we talked about it. The, so the payment service network that we use, PSM, for some reason, whatever reason, it, I don't, we don't know how it does it. We have called, we've tried to see, there's something on the backend that's miscommunicating between PSM and Banyan Utility Billing. And so some of the payments, like he said, five of them, just in the month, in November alone, those payments they've paid, they've gotten around through and somehow when we pull the reports over, they get put on wrong accounts. I know I sat down with the lady and we went through bill by bill by bill for like, from the beginning of the year to current and there, we, I had to take off late fees and I had to, it caused a lot of issues for her and that is a system thing that we're at a loss, we're not sure what to do with. And so that's why Levi and I have been talking to Tyler Technologies, a new software because it's, it is, it's very frustrating for the customer. It's very, we feel bad because we don't want to overcharge them or for them to get these little red cards saying you didn't pay and then they're, they're, they already paid. I mean, I'd be mad too. So it is a problem and we're, I don't know how to fix that when it's a sophomore, a software issue. And Levi has been aware of it too. So that's why we're looking at a new software system.
Well, who does the tax support for that payment service?
It's, you call and you get somebody from out of the country some, most of the time. It's outsourced, yeah. So it, it's very frustrating for us to.
Is that a problem with PSM that you're, you're having?
Yeah.
Okay, cause I know that I, Dakota Natural Gas uses that system.
Yep.
And so I tried to set it up automatically to take out with my Dakota Natural Gas and I noticed immediately I had problems with it, so I had to shut it down and I just make my own payments. Because, and so that's the Tyler Services, that's a different payment system.
That's what we're looking at, yeah. It's a whole different software system.
He's not alone in that.
No.
Cause I was kind of wondering if it wasn't that PSM, cause it's super confusing. You think you have it set up and it's not.
Yeah. Well, even so, some of our checks, like the physical checks that we get in the office, we have one of those machines, I don't know what it's called, a check reader machine where we put the checks through and that gets uploaded to PSM and then the next day you run this report, it's supposed to put everything over the account numbers, like the account numbers are in there and everything. So it's supposed to communicate with Banyan Utility Billing and it's supposed to apply those payments to those accounts because they're the same account number on PSM and the same account number in our Banyan Utility System. And for whatever reason, some of them are getting put on other people's accounts. And I know Julie and Sarah have both called PSM and talked to them about it since they're the ones that do most of the utility billing side of things and it is frustrating and I feel awful that these guys are having to go through this. I just don't know how to fix it when it's not on, it's not something on our end.
Out of curiosity, is it the ones that hit the paper? And do you prob, do you pay automatically online or do you pay off that stuff?
Well, it's both.
I, I pay my bill online.
It's happening both ways. Cause of the physical check that they bring us to the office, we have that, that check reader and so Julie can do some of the checks at the, the office, at her desk instead of taking everything to the bank. And that's what's getting, cause the check reader goes into PSM and then you check everything. Like we have to look at everything. I, I did do it one month, they showed me, so I had an understanding of what was going on. And you have to actually look and make sure the correct, you match up the, what's on the check to what's on PSM, count number, everything. And so we, I have no idea how it is getting put on the wrong accounts. It is, has to be something on the backend. I, I don't know how to fix, I can't fix PSM. So.
I don't know that we can give you an answer completely tonight, but we will look into it a little bit more and try to get it figured out.
Maybe it's a case where in the meantime, you might want to consider a different way of paying it in the meantime. Whether it be dropping off a check or doing something that way, so. Because if they're not, if it seems to be his account more than others, maybe it has something to do with the numbers or something, so.
Yeah.
The biggest issue that I've had is other people's, you know, like I actually think The biggest issue that I've had is other people's, you know, like I actually think Chuck may have even paid my bill one month, so...
Are you the one that bought a house from Chuck?
Four and a half years ago.
Four and a half years ago, yeah. That seems for some reason, your two accounts, because I think the same thing happened last year around this time, didn't it?
Correct, I don't know if it was Chuck.
Because Chuck, you had called just last month and there was something, because your bill had showed paid, I think is what it was, and it was actually his payment that was on your account. I think that's what it was. Because remember when you said you had dropped off a check?
Yeah, is that, I don't know if that's the case or not. With me, twice I brought checks in and left them at City Hall. Naturally, the day after the tenth, I got the little greeting notice in the mail that I hadn't paid my account. I thought maybe they crossed, you know. The one of them, I actually just threw it out the door and then I got another one and then I got the late fee and whatever. Uh, I talked to Julie or the other lady in there on the first time it happened and, uh, nope, there's no record of your check coming into this office.
Well, the last...
And I called the bank and then I called her back and said, well, the bank just verified it. The check was deposited on the eleventh.
Well, and he, Chuck had physically handed me the, I said, no, Chuck paid because he handed it to me. I knew he had paid.
That's a different time it happened, right?
Yeah, it just, I don't know what is up with our check reader and P S N. There's something that's not communicating.
Public funds there, my God, if somebody hands you a check for whatever the amount, three hundred dollars or five hundred dollars, their account should be credited automatically, it should be a zero balance if that's what it would be and life should be good. It's not a big scientific going to the moon thing.
And you're correct.
It's a software. Right, it's a software that we have.
And we don't have, when we did, if you guys remember, we didn't have a whole lot of options with. We went to the online to try to help out people. So, and it's not the same software together. That's where if we do go to Tyler, they're all under one house, everything's together. So hopefully those issues would come out. We also get more tech support with it, so that's our hope.
Thank you.
Hey, just a quick question. Do you need anything statement wise that shows your billings and your payments or your records?
I think I have the last, the last record. I'll, I'll have to double check, but I can reach out to Ashley's office if I need anything else. Thank you.
But you got the late fee or the late notice after the, you had already set the check, or paid online?
Correct, yeah, so I will need my account, this was the last that I received this week. So I'll need my account adjusted to apply the payment that was taken from my bank account.
If you bring it in, and Julie, I think Julie's working tomorrow, so, and then she can do that, so...
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll maybe just call the office and...
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is there anybody else who would like to address the commission?
I just, being we're wrapping up here, I just want to remind everybody that our office assistant Sarah's been there for a year and we want to thank Sarah for gracing us with her presence for the last year and helping us out. So I want to say thank you, Sarah, for helping out in the office and doing all that you do. On the twenty-first, it'll be our anniversary with the city, so...
Thank you, Sarah.
Congrats, Sarah, thank you.
Her note helped, right, Paul?
I told her to put a note in it, because I told her I wouldn't remember.
I was just...
So there again, she was delicious too.
The grants, we are working on submitting those funding for those, so hopefully we can get those payments back moving forward that add more to your budget. We're just waiting on, we sent in, I believe, most of the paperwork submitted now.
We know where you live.
We also give you a payment every month, so if we have to. Is there any other thing for the good order? If not, oh, Chuck?
Wish everybody a happy holiday and, uh, have anything I got. I appreciate you listening to me all year. Everything I got's going to keep till after your twenty eighth, then I'll be back.
All right, I have a motion to adjourn now.
I'll make the motion.
Dave moves or a second?
Second.
Probably a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.